Are we ready? Good afternoon. It is 2:00 and I will convene our school board briefing meeting for Monday, February 6, Board members, we have a few things on the agenda under, we have Construction Advisory Committee reports under Board Members and under Executive Services, we have a couple policies, Policy 1.20, Policy 6.07, and of course, public comment and good of the order and Board Member comments. So we'll start with our Advisory Committee meetings. And on the top, I guess they're alphabetical, is Construction Advisory Committee. Ms. Molly Scott.
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins, Board Members, Mr. Martin. Just going to go over some of our topics that we've done since I saw you all last. I believe that we left off with, the procurement department was going to have a public meeting with all the construction industry professionals regarding the new RFP/RFQ process. That took place on November 29th and there was various folks from the industry represented there and it was really good constructive feedback and suggestions between procurement and the industry professionals. A lot of objective dialogue was shared and some things were brought up. And then in December, Susan and her group kind of brought those things back to our group meeting, to the Construction Advisory Committee meeting, and we went over some of the changes and some of the things that she was going to recommend, the operational processes that were going to be changed, some of the key areas that most of the industry professionals kind of honed in on because they were able to provide feedback before the public meeting for Susan and her group. And then there were a couple of sections that most people were either concerned about, had questions about, wanted to discuss, those types of things. And I believe that tomorrow, we are going to hear from Susan and her group at another public meeting as the final end-all-be-all document that will be used going forward for the RFQ/RFP process for any construction or bidding with the district.
And that's at 2:00 tomorrow.
That's tomorrow, 2:00 in this building, I believe, if that's right. Yes, I believe. Somewhere else, not in this room. Also in December, we had a motion to shift our agenda. We kind of, we wanted to make sure the RFQ and RFP process was done purposefully and had the time that it was needed to take, so we kind of shifted our agenda, added a meeting in May and kind of moved all of our topics down one because we needed to concentrate on that RFQ process due to Triple M needing to be coming out soon so it could get constructed and the schedule could be on track and all of those things. So in January, we met again and we talked about the site scoring matrix for the new Triple M High School. Basically, the district gave us a matrix with different parameters for each site, the one in Alva and the one in Gateway. And as a committee, we looked and reviewed the matrix. And then in February, we just had a meeting last, and this is not on your agenda and I apologize, last week, we had our meeting and we were given some information from the district regarding each site per those different characteristics. So whether it was, you know, public, construction, land development, all of those things, the district gave us some information so we could decide on the weighting factors of each of those specific characteristics, how the committee would want to weight each of those topics, I guess. And then we decided that we would go to have a field trip to each of those sites next month. And being, we are under the Sunshine laws, we decided to have the meeting on March 1st would be a field trip to one site and then another meeting on March 2nd at a specific time for the second site. Just so we meet at this particular site at a particular time, the public and everybody knows we're going to be there and then the next day, we'll be at the next site at a specific time and place, so there's no gray areas as to, well, did you start, did you not, you know, those types of things. And we do have three meetings left, our March, April, and May meetings. And I believe April will be when the site matrix is reviewed and scored. The scores will be calculated by the district with the information that they provide us. The CAT Committee will then score those two sites. That information will be given to the district for kind of a, here's the points that each site got. And then I believe in May, we'll make a recommendation to you all based on the scores that came from those matrix score sheets that the CAT Committee has done. Ms. Morgan, did I leave anything out?
You didn't. But I do want to make a comment before I left the meeting last week. You were talking about the need, perhaps the need for the Department of Transportation, the District and County Commission to meet before the scoring is done or approval is done for the site. Was there any further discussion on that?
There wasn't. And from what I understand, when we score those two sites based on the weight factors that we've given those specific topics, we as a committee will score those based on our broad-based knowledge and I guess, you know, things that we think are important or not important. We then give that information to the district, they then give it to you all to approve or not approve or make a recommendation. And alls we're doing is making a recommendation. So ultimately, I believe it is up to you all to decide if we say this site and you want this site or vice versa. So I think that that's really the only, it's just, it just gives a better understanding and more concrete information and facts on each site. And I will say, and I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, Mr. Martin, I think I'm going to allow to say this, but I will say the public comment that has come to our meeting has been very positive for each site. So that's been very refreshing. So there's not necessarily anyone really anti-either site. They're vowing for their own site, which is good. So I think, based on the information we have and those scores that we give them, once the recommendation from our committee is given to the board, then it is up to the board to then, maybe in conjunction with other entities, I'm not sure how that goes.
Board Members, any other comments? I do have one question. A lot of times, we work with other community agencies like the Parks and Rec Department to see, or FGCU, to see if they are interested in combining any of the services. And does your committee get into that at all?
No.
Okay, that's an after-the-fact kind of thing. Well, Molly, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Please express to your committee our appreciation. You are a committee on the move and working very hard. If you're going to do two-site visits and then back and analyze and everything, you're a busy committee. Ms. Morgan, thank you for being a part of that and we look forward to your next report.
We're happy to serve. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next Advisory Committee is Continuous Systemic Improvement Advisory Committee, Mr. Brian Rist. Is Brian here?
I didn't see him. He's changed.
You don't look like Brian.
He might be insulted.
Hi, Mr. Rist is unable to be with us this afternoon, so, good afternoon, Board Members and Dr. Atkins, and so I'm the fill-in for today.
Good.
So we're really happy to be here with you. We have only had one meeting since Mr. Rist last updated you and that was on January 30th. Mrs. Fisher was unable to attend that meeting, but we were very pleased to have Ms. Patrica attend and so we were delighted to welcome her as well as three new members to that committee.
Good.
Yeah, it was really exciting to see some new faces and everyone was very happy to be there. So we began by presenting an update to the format and showed them the new District Strategic Plan, Vision 2020. They were very happy to see the reduction in size and had some comments to make about how much easier it was for them to understand the steps related to that, so we were happy about that. And then Saretta Ralph presented on Goal One, Student Achievement, and presented each one of the updated targets. There was a lot of discussion around possibly condensing some of those targets. However, Mr. Rist had to leave our meeting early, so we decided to wait until the next meeting to make any formal recommendations to come forward to the board. So I anticipate we'll have some discussion at our February meeting and we'll have more information for you at the next update.
Thank you. Board Members, any other comments? Ms. Patrica.
Cindy, I was really impressed with your presentation. You put it together in a way that made it very easy for the committee members to understand how we've sort of condensed the strategic plan into Vision 2020. You put that forth very well. And if you could bring back to the committee my excitement about working with them and the impression that I had that they're hardcore. They really push hard at us to come up with answers and to make our systems better. So I was really, really impressed and very, very grateful for the time that they give to the district. So if you could share that message with them, I would appreciate it.
I'll be happy to do so. Thank you.
Anybody else? And I thank you too, and please do pass on, the 2020 is who we are and what we're all about, so that's a really critical piece and they should continue to be vigilant about what makes sense to them because if it doesn't make sense to them, it doesn't make sense to other people either. And certainly, we can get very wordy as we need to sometimes, but we need to condense it for, for the everyday person. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
Curriculum Advisory Committee, Ms. April Katron. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Thank you.
Great.
Good afternoon, Board Member Superintendent. Since our last briefing, we've had a January meeting where we had the Social Studies Textbook Adoption Committee present and it was a wonderful presentation. Actually, three members from our board also served on the textbook adoption committee. And it is with great consideration and thoughtful dialogue that we make a recommendation to the board as the curriculum advisory committee to accept the textbook adoption's support and how they feel that we should move ahead with the textbook adoption.
Thank you. And we heard some presentation too and we are very proud of what they've done and what you've done to review it. Board Members, any other comments? Well, thank you very much.
And if you have any other topics for consideration for us, please let us know.
We will do that. District Advisory Committee, Ms. Cindy Crosby.
Hi, Dr. Atkins, the board, Mr. Martin. We've had one meeting since the last update, it was in November. We introduced our new liaison, Pam LaRiviere. Then we also talked about all of the ongoing topics for the DAC. So in January, we had our financial update and capital funding meeting, that went great. I'll brief you on that next time. Then February, the, we're going to hear about curriculum and additional presentations will be in the breakout session. So we'll have an overview in the main thing and then when we break out, it'll be geared toward elementary, middle, and high school because they always have specific questions since the curriculum is different in all the grade levels. March, we're going to hear from technology, April, the Lee County Standards of Excellence, and May, the year-end review with Dr. Atkins. And everyone seemed very excited about the topics for the rest of the year. We announced the education forum, which is scheduled for the February 8th at Cypress Lake High School auditorium from 6:00 to 8:15. We had a transportation presentation from Robert Cody and William Law and that was so well-received. It just seemed like they really, he gave, Robert Cody gave the same information, I think, that the previous director did, but in a different format maybe. And then he had answers to questions immediately. It was, he just knew his stuff. And it was very refreshing and nice to hear, you know, to have him receive so well because we do have the transportation presentation every year and it's gotten maybe, you know, they're used to, from, I apologize, I forgot his name.
Mr. Morgan?
Mr. Morgan. But you know, it's just that he seems, Robert Cody seems really on top of his game, so it was so nice to have him speak. Then when we had our breakout sessions, I challenged them to try and think of ways to get more SAC attendance. It's an ongoing issue with DAC that the SAC attendance is so poor, especially in the middle and high school, I believe, more so than the elementary. I think elementary piggybacks it with PTA, PTO, I mean, that's what we did when I was in elementary. So they came up with things such as review, the communication methods such as parent links, emails, even personal phone calls to get people to come, especially at the high school level, have food at the meetings.
Pizza always works.
People seem to like food. Student involvement, then they suggested things such as if a student got their parent to come, they could get a homework pass. But you know, if they came twice, oh, you get a homework pass, something like that. And then creative marketing to involve and educate parents about what SAC actually is and how beneficial it is. And then I, that's about it?
Board Members, any comments?
Ms. Morgan? I'm wondering if the problem with SAC, or DAC, is a SAC problem.
That's what, that's what she was saying.
Yeah, SAC. We trying to figure out why SAC is so misunderstood, maybe.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood.
No, that's okay.
But I will offer an observation. When I visited the schools in my district a couple of years ago, I saw that the quality of the meeting ranged from exceptional to very poor. And so I guess my question would be to the superintendent, you know, to what extent do we have guidelines for schools for what should be happening? I mean, I sat in one SAC meeting when people said we're required to do this by the state every four years, thank you for coming, any questions? And then I sat in another one where the principal pulled out data referring to academic improvement since they made a decision the prior year to invest in a particular piece of academic software or something and asked the parents whether or not that investment should be continued. So I just, I just wonder if the content is, is the problem? And do we have a standard? And do we hold principals accountable? Do, does the staff, or do SAC members evaluate their SAC and what's going on? And I think it might be helpful, anyway.
I agree with that. Some, I believe that all SACs are different because some have good attendance, some don't, and it would be interesting to know the answers to those questions.
And I actually attended a SAC meeting as a parent and I've talked to other people that have gone to different, you know, middle school and elementary and they're all run differently. The one I attended, the principal ran the SAC meeting, not the chairman. So I think there has to be, I don't think, as a parent, not understanding, we don't, we don't know the rules, so we need guidance in that. You know what I'm saying? So, and I think they, every one of them are being different, just like they're, everybody's, you've witnessed. So I don't know, that's, back to Dr. Atkins, I think defining those guidelines and, and we don't get a lot of advertisement, it just goes to the people that actually have attended. So it's not, you know, it's probably on the website, but you know, parents aren't going there to the website in high school, so, and the kids aren't obviously going to tell their parents anything. So I don't know, that's something, maybe, the meetings maybe should be set up in advance like ours and then they're posted at orientation or, you know, open house and kind of have an idea and kind of pushed at open house. No one talks about it at open house.
Thank you. Ms. LaRiviere?
One of the thoughts that occurred to me when we were at DAC is I thought, you know, we probably need to do, and I think some of the SAC chairs would appreciate, a training on how to run it, how you run it and what types of things should take place and how to coordinate with your principal so that, and then provide a model, like your own little professional development fishbowl where you can watch how, what would go on and then make people make comments and use it as a learning experience. I think a lot of that has to do with the confidence of how to run it differently than a PTO meeting because they're handled very differently. And I do agree, food is important, but I think what's happening with a lot of the schools, some schools are very proactive of inviting their business partners to be part of their SAC. And other schools, it's just the parents. And so that's what we, there's a whole realm where we need to be communicating with the business community about how important it is for them to get involved and be on a SAC that's close to their business. So that's, we need to, we need to see what it can do to help it because otherwise, what then will go on here at DAC really doesn't do the purpose it's supposed to be serving. It's supposed to be going back and sharing and very little does that happen, very rarely.
Anybody else? And I agree, Dr. Atkins, I think we should talk to our principals about making sure somebody is designated from their SAC or, or from their parent group to be represented. Lots of good information at those meetings. I know I was the liaison for a couple of years in the very beginning and that is a big undertaking. I thank you for doing that because it's a huge group, but so very important to get the word out to our parents and community about the, what's going on in the district.
Well, just, just as a follow-up, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with, you know, the comments that have been saying, Mrs. Morgan did bring this up a while ago when she had attended a number of different SAC meetings. The one of the things that I think is critically important is that, you know, SAC is something, is a committee that really helps you with the implementation and the decisions around your school improvement plan. And those school improvement plans are in line with Vision 2020, so not only, you've seen, I think to a large degree, staffs are, are well-informed. However, we want to just make sure that our SAC committees are well-informed and our parents are well-informed as well about the goals of a, of your school improvement plan because I think if you're all on the same page, then, you know, that's, it increases the level of success, the probability of success, I should say. What I will do as a take-back is I will get with our team, I, we have an executive committee meeting today, or this week, and I'll bring it up at our executive team meeting and then we'll come back to you with a recommendation in terms of how we can improve consistency with our SACs across districts because I know that really many of our schools that have successful SACs have successful schools. And I think you can, you know, they, they're typically, my experience has always been pretty helpful from a SAC committee, so I think that if we're able to standardize them a little bit better, it would also better support our district advisory committee as well. So we'll do that and maybe bring that back at another briefing. And in the meantime, I'll keep you posted in our individual meetings.
Yeah, I think, I think it's real, both pieces are real important, that the SACs are pretty consistent and secondly, that then the SACs are connected to the district and that's through the district advisory committee.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you so much. And Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee, Mr. Joe Ryder. Is Joe here?
No, ma'am. So I guess it's only me. Good afternoon, Chairman.
The committee did vote to change our meetings from Thursday to Tuesday for our new board member, Ms. Patrica. On February 14th, we, is our next meeting and one of our presenters will be from Dr. Bohatch's office and it's going to be on restorative justice. I'm not sure and I don't remember if Mr. Ryder reported on our January stuff from that meeting.
Yeah, he did.
I'm trying to see. We had some new board, some new members to EDAC and, oh. Joe, I'm trying to see what we reported on last time.
You're just in time.
Thank you. I apologize, I was here and nobody recognized me and so they said, no, we don't know what you're doing here, so. Okay.
I think lots of folks recognize you, Mr. Ryder.
So I apologize, but we have been pretty busy. Our, stay here, our, Michelle has-
Some moral support for me.
Yes, that's it. Has been guiding us very well and also we, our new Chris will be able to attend the meetings. We've changed them to Tuesday the 2nd. And our chairman, Dr. Peter Dianui, also teaches at FGCU, so he'll be able to attend also. This coming meeting, we're going to be pretty fortunate to have, Dr. Bohatch will be speaking and I believe, isn't Lele Muvdi also?
No, she has asked to be moved because she does, she's waiting to get some more data to be able to present to the team, so she asked for us to move her a little later on.
Right. So we will be getting something from her also about school choice, of course, which we're looking forward to. And do you tell them we've got three new members?
No. That's right, they're on the front.
They're, they're on the front, thank you. We got three new members, the three that were asked to leave, I never met because they never made a meeting, so. Well, they may have been nice people, they just never attended, so we showed them the door. And per our, oh, I shouldn't say it, per our bylaw, you know, that's what it says we're supposed to do. So we have three, and so right now, we have a good group of people. Mr. Frederick Atkins and Mr. Damaris Boone were both at the meeting and so the other one did send, the new one sent us a little note that said that they couldn't make it, so. And we had a great, some computations by Dr. Itzen about graduation, which was very telling to us. He showed us, you know, some behind-the-scenes numbers and stuff like that that certainly meant a great deal to us and we thank him for that. So with that, unless you all have any questions, that's all I have in my late arrival.
Board Members, anything? Well, we thank you so much for your report and we look forward to hearing the next one and look forward-
On time, I'll be on time.
Do you want us to send you reminders?
It was, I was here and it just got, it was my, my fault.
No, I'm just, I'm just kidding.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And last but by no means least, another very, very, very busy committee and that's our Finance Advisory Committee, Mr. Biltub.
Good afternoon, Dr. Cuckle, Board Members, Dr. Atkins, although you sitting there makes me nervous. School positive reinforcement was a teacher walking behind us and maybe whacking us with a ruler if we weren't performing up to standards, so if I flinch ever now then, I'm afraid you're swinging. And, Mr. Martin. During the second quarter of school year 1617, the Finance Committee has met three times. At our October meeting, we considered the approved budget for year 1617 and the 100 Key Performance Indicator Program that the district's participating in with AcPoint KPI and the Council for Greater City Schools. Dr. Denise Carlin, Mr. Mark Laurel, made a presentation about that. The committee was impressed. They had questions about the glossary of what the terms to the ratio really meant and we were given that information. And we look forward to soon getting the third year's worth of ratios and seeing how well we're performing. In November, the committee welcomed Ms. Giovannielli to our, as our staff liaison and we thanked Ms. Morgan for her couple of years of service and we appreciated that. And then we had a presentation from the Transportation Department from Mr. Law and Mr. Cody and I echo the DAC's recommendation of them, they are, they're like the Lady Gaga halftime show of the transportation. They give you the information and make sure you understand it. We had some questions that we submitted to them, they, about utilizing volunteers to supervise students on buses, combining different levels of schools in a bus so that maybe you could eliminate some routes, how are routes set for students when the students' parents live in different areas? Would a one-tier bell system work for the district and save us some money? And how do you provide routes for students that are being driven or walked to school? They answered all of those questions for us. They told us why it would be much more expensive to do it that way or why state law precluded us from doing it that way. to do it that way or why state law precluded us from doing it that way. We were very happy with all the answers that they gave us and we support them in their endeavors. In December, the committee was briefed by Mr. Dwayne Alton, Ms. Brandy Macia and Mr. Robert Stratton about Chromebooks, everybody just hears Chromebooks, so we were asking about that. We'd heard questions about students' Chromebooks not working, not being able to log in, not being able to print. They came and they explained to us the process that the, the district followed by determining the curriculum that was to be used first. Once the curriculum was identified, how the software that would present that curriculum to the students was selected and, and obtained and then once that was done, how they then started looking at hardware, Chromebooks, iPads, Kindles, all kinds of things, and how they selected the Chromebooks as being the best, most efficient to utilize the software and the curriculum that the district had already selected. They answered our questions about some non-functioning units and, and explained that they're aggressively following any complaints that they get to fix individual items, but that the complaints that they're getting statistically to the, I've forgotten what they said, 10,000 units that are out there, or eight to 10, whatever it is, was statistically awfully low and that we were happy with what they presented to us. In all cases presented during the second quarter, the Finance Advisory Committee was impressed with the actions of sta, the staff was taking. Ms. Susan Malley and Mae Graham responded to the committee's suggestions of student intern, suggestions of student interns and are currently working on legal issues and outlining business responsibilities to allow vendors of hours to take students of hours as interns to, to show them how the business world really works and they're proceeding with that. Mark Mora, Dr. Carlin and Lauren Stillwell continue to be in contact with the committee regarding ongoing processes which are being established in reference to naming rights. And that's it. Any questions?
Good, good questions during your, your meetings. Board members, any questions or comments? Well, we thank you also for the hard work and there's more to come as we get, as we get more information about next year's budget, so.
And thank you for not hitting me.
That was a good report.
A very thorough report. Okay, Dr. Atkins and probably Mr. Martin too, we have a couple policies that you're presenting, is that correct?
That is correct. The first one, Policy 1.20, Community Involvement Opportunities, Mr. Martin is presenting that one.
Dr. Cuckle, board members, this is the formal review of Policy 1.20 concerning board advisory committees. This was discussed with you, this proposed revision at the last briefing meeting and it'll be presented to you at public hearing on February 20th for action. Basically, the purpose is to make amendments to establish membership that allows for representation from all seven school board members and also establish a process for review and tracking implementation of recommendations made by advisory committees. Be happy to address any questions.
I think we've been through this pretty thoroughly. Any, any other questions, board members? Okay. Yes, Ms. Law Rivier?
A question and I am, maybe I'm, I'm incorrect and please forgive me for not checking with Dr. Martin on this earlier, but my question revolves around the fact that, is this the policy that also talks, discusses the required attendance and the number of absences to be removed?
Yes, it is. That is, I'm trying to find the section where that is addressed. It's in Section 1D, the last sentence, starts out, members who missed three consecutive meetings of the committee.
Okay, that, this is one thing that I know we had brought up for just a brief discussion at some ti, a while ago. Most of our committees meet six times a year.
Mm-hmm.
And if we wait, and waiting for somebody to be absent, three absences, we basically have not had effective representation, it's from that district, from that area to be part of the process. So that was a question that has come up and I'm just wanting to ask, is that something we want to discuss at this time while we're looking at the policy?
Board members, comments? Ms. Morgan?
Well, I, I think part of the problem is enforcement. We're not, we're not making it clear when people are not attending that they are subject to removal and I think we need to be, I, I think in talking to Linda Benzinger, who handles the relationship with the various committees, my sense is that some secretaries are more on top of attendance and keeping us abreast of who's, who's, you know, falling off, et cetera. My sense is that there's just not an expectation that people will appear and if they don't appear, that there will be a letter or a reminder that you failed to contact your committee and if you don't, you know, if you're not interested, please let us know and if you fail to attend a future meeting, then we'll replace you. I mean, I just think it's, it's more a matter of let's enforce the policy we have and see what happens.
Board members, Ms.?
The question I have is, even if they're excused absences, that's, I mean, but I mean, three consecutive is regardless excused, I mean, it's non-attendance, so, I mean, that was a question I actually had recently, but I'm kind of new, so I'm trying not to push the limit on everything, but, so, you know, I'm just, because I, of course, don't want to kick anybody off that wants to be on there, but if they're not attending, absence speaks louder than words, you know?
Yeah, I agree. Ms. Law Rivier?
Possibly it may behoove the advisory committees to look at what they have as far as their, some procedural pieces within it so that maybe when we get our agenda, we get a list of the members and it shows who was here at the last meeting, so it shows presence, you know, who was here at the previous meeting. So we have a chart that we can then follow and then it makes it easier for the chair to have something they're looking at to verify.
Mr. Toiber?
Thank you, Dr. Cuckle. The other issue too is that it states three consecutive meetings, so you could miss two, show up one, miss two more and, you know, be pretty much ineffective by just going to two meetings for an entire academic year. And I think that's some of the issues too, is that even excused or unexcused, you're still not there. I mean, whether, everybody has reasons and I understand that, but if you're not there, you're not being helpful.
Go ahead.
I agree with that part about the three consecutive, if you just miss three meetings, it doesn't matter whether they're back-to-back, it's, that's, you know.
And, and I would support that too, three, I think, three meetings, but, but I also like the procedural thing that, that maybe our policy is quoted, I mean, if, if they miss it, they say, we missed you last time, it's important that you are the liaison to represent your group and a reminder to have someone take your place if you can't make it and that our policy states, yada, yada. And, and I question too, the three consecutive meetings, because we only have six. Maybe it should just be three, although that takes a sort of, I mean, if there are only six meetings, they miss two, they're, they're one, they miss a third one, it's almost toward the end of the year. It's a really difficult issue to deal with.
But they're now appointed for two years, so.
There you go.
You know, if they're not attending the first year, we don't want them to carry over to the second year, so.
I agree. I would be in-
Is it consecutive?
Yes, I would be in favor of striking consecutive. I see heads shaking.
Anybody else want to comment?
And I'd also like to address the procedural thing, can we have a letter written up that goes out to those that aren't in attendance that can be easily just put in the mail, signed and put in the mail?
There is a letter that goes out. Is there? Every time they miss?
That's up to, not every time, it's up to the recording secretaries to send out the letter when they miss two meetings.
But, but they, they don't receive a letter when they've missed one or two, is that correct?
It's supposed to be two. After two.
Okay.
So maybe after the first one, there could be, instead of a letter, just an email, we missed you and-
Somebody has to do that.
Molly, and who else is here? Mr. Tub, who else is here from, yeah, do you, are you all aware that people of the policy and do you pay attention to who's there and is the secretary?
Molly, come on up so that we all can hear you and it's all on the record. And Mr. Tub, anybody that wants to speak to this because you would be needing to do the follow-up on it.
As far as I'm, I know, Debbie has informed myself and Darren, our vice chair, we had a couple of folks miss the first, I believe it was three meetings this year and we were to approve a letter that she had already had, I thought it was a standard letter that was sent to a committee member if they missed those meetings. We then had to say, yeah, go ahead and send that to them and it basically told them they were no longer on the committee and then we got new members. That was the only letter I was aware of, is when they missed those three meetings, you're no longer on the committee, we're replacing you. Is essentially, that's what I thought the rule was.
Would you be in favor of a letter going out after each absence?
I mean, sometimes it's unavoidable if you have, you know, if you miss a meeting, hopefully you're on a committee and you're aware that you're missing it and you give notice to the secretary, whoever's taking the minutes, that you're going to be missing a meeting, but if it's something unexcused or we don't know about, that happens occasionally and I would be interested to know if they did it just because they couldn't avoid it or they just didn't feel like coming or whatever it was, but I think that if you have the, if you can miss three meetings or if you can be absent for three meetings without anything happen, it's not consecutive, like you said earlier, you're missing basically almost the whole time. We do take attendance, Debbie does get information prior to making sure everyone attends. If she does have someone that's not coming, she'll tell us who's not coming and why, if they gave a reason, sometimes they don't even respond. I would be in favor after two, I think after one, again, I mean, I have little kids, maybe something happened and I couldn't make it and then my vice chair would take over that meeting. I wouldn't want to be punished if my, something happened with my kid and it was unavoidable.
No, just a reminder.
If you're missing two meetings, then yeah, I think that there's, that's, you know when the meetings are, every Wednesday at three o'clock or Tuesday nights or whenever you have your meetings, I mean, you can jump in, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that after two, then that's a, hey, just, just to know, you have one more. I mean, maybe a kind of a warning, I hate to be so juvenile about it, but, I don't know. What do, what do you think?
I, I completely support what she's saying because we have the same issue with the curriculum committee, but Jamie Fowler's really good about following up and sending letters out. I think also reminding them of the board policy might be helpful at our next few meetings so that those people that have missed, it's just a review, so that way, maybe it'll remind them that, you know, unless it's an emergency with a child or a family member, that, you know, they really need to be there because we rely on their support.
Go ahead, Mr. Tub.
The Finance Committee does take attendance, we aggressively watch that. Current policy though is that if they call and say, I can't be there, it's an excused absence and the clock starts over again, so I think something like what you're talking about where three, excused or unexcused would help because we have people who have missed three or more, but they've been excused, so they've got no tick mark against them yet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I think each secretary looks at, I think that each secretary may be looking at excused differently then, because if somebody's thinking excuse to absence is excused, then that doesn't count for them as an absence.
I think the policy reads that all it takes to be excused is to call and inform the, the secretary or the chair that you're not going to be there.
Right.
It's not, well, that's a good reason or that's not a good reason.
Exactly.
It's just a call.
Yeah.
I guess the point, the point that I'm making is, but it's still an absence and so the secretary needs to count it as, okay, here's one absent, not just you get to start over again.
Right. We can't make a judgment on their excuse or not excuse. Mr. Martin, did you want to say something?
Yes, just clarification on a few issues, yes, the policy president relieves that, indicates that unless the member has advised the committee chair of the absent at least three days in advance, it'll be unexcused. If they do provide that notice three days in advance of the meeting, as presently as it reads, it's excused. And I understand the board's desire to improve, prove attendance at these meetings, one thing, just a suggestion to keep in mind and committee chairs may have a thought on this, I think there may be some value in providing a level of incentive to provide that notice that you're not going to be attending and the incentive is that when you do so, it's, it's excused because that enables the chair and I guess maybe the staff liaison to have an idea of how many members are going to be attending a particular meeting to make plans on what issues should or should not be addressed and such, so I'm not sure, I, just one factor to consider, when you take away that incentive, if you consider doing that. The other question I would have is if you took out the word consecutive, one question is then, is it two or three during a school year, is it two or three during the entire two-year membership? That's something else you would have to clarify. And then one last suggestion, if I may, is, I think this is a good conversation the board needs to have, but I would suggest that you hold any additional revisions until after this is accomplished because it would be a new issue, we don't want to have to start the process over again. And these revisions, I think, are important to get accomplished so that you do have that representation from all seven board members in the near future.
I agree.
Anybody else? So what, 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 what direction do you need from us right now in terms of the other areas that you mentioned?
Well, the other areas, well, the, the only other area you're speaking about that's not presently addressed in the proposed revision is this member, is this attendance issue. Now, there is also an issue that you have discussed before about adding the Student Advisory Committee as a seventh committee and maybe those two subjects can be part of a future conversation for the next round of revisions to this policy.
That, that sounds good. You okay, board member? You okay? All right. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Atkins, purchasing a bidding? Ms. Malley?
Good afternoon, school board members. The revision for the, the proposed revision for the purchasing policy that's before you is being driven by the transition from the, of the construction projects into the procurement services department. So with that transition, we will be soliciting bids and RFQs, two different types of solicitations. The bids will be hard bids where we don't have the evaluation criteria and scoring and those are issued when the scope of the work is known and can be documented and therefore the price for the job will be put forward in a hard bid. Basically, it's price-driven, so for example, a re-roofing project would be a hard bid. In addition, the new processes are for requests for qualifications where price is not concluded in, reviewed initially, but evaluation committee members score on the qualifications of the submitting firms. So the change to the policy is we are broadening the opportunity for potentially a member of the public to sit on the evaluation committee. And if we are to do that, it's recommended by our legal counsel that we have the anti-lobbying policy applied to everyone on the committee. As written, it just reflects, the anti-lobbying would be for staff members, so the single change to the policy is any reference to the people who would, who the policy applies to, it would be broadened to include if a member of the public served on the committee, they also would not be able to be lobbied.
Makes sense to me. Board members?
Yeah, me too.
Any other thoughts or questions? Thank you. I believe, Dr. Atkins, that takes us down to public comment.
That would be correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Public comment, is there anyone in the room that would like to speak this afternoon under public comment? Raise your hand. If not, we will, shall move to board member comments and I'll start with Ms. Giovinelli.
I don't have any really. Good meeting.
Ms. Patrica?
I do. I attended the All County Band Concert and it was amazing, it really blew me away. I've been to several concerts at individual schools and to see all of our- I've been to several concerts at individual schools, and to see all of our most talented kids get together. I've never been moved by music before, except maybe at a wedding, when I get up and danced a little. But I was really moved by this music, both at the middle school and the high school level. And this leads me to want to comment about Lee Byer, and the fact that she organizes students to come in and perform before every board meeting, or most board meetings. I just think it's a fabulous opportunity for our kids to showcase in a public setting their talents. And it's very meaningful to them, and I'm really glad that we support that. I did visit Island Park High School with Bert Saunders. I have gone to both the Village of Astero Council and the City of Benita Springs Council to introduce myself as a school board member in that area, and facilitate an ongoing relationship with them. I visited Lee High Senior High School, and I was really impressed with the level of school spirit there. Each student is referred to, and most of them refer to themselves as Lee High Scholars, which I thought was really impressive. She has instituted a program of training throughout the school, and almost every teacher has received the same training. And really, the motto there is "All means all" in terms of education. So no students are falling through the crack there. She's got a couple of innovated programs, innovative programs, to make sure that our students in that high school are succeeding. Really, really impressed with that. And I also had a tour of Varsity Lakes Middle School. Matt Maderos, am I saying his name correctly?
Yes.
Matt is the new principal out there. He's only been there for a month. And I believe that he's got the talent necessary to move that school forward. And what I was really impressed with is that Jackie Corey is going to be working with him, they're right next door to each other, to help him implement programs that will help student behavior. So he's kind of got a mentor right next to him, because it's a relatively new administration at that school. So he's new, but I was inspired, I have a sense of confidence that he knows what he's doing and he's going to move that school forward. So I was happy with that. Common takeaways from all of my visits, both to the schools and community meetings, again, is capital funding needs. Everywhere I go, people tell me, "We need more money." New schools, old schools, it doesn't matter. It comes up in community meetings as well. Several of the residents in Benita Springs asked me about it before the meeting, "What are you doing? How are you moving forward?" Just a couple other things. The 5K for the Foundation for Lee County Schools, I went, but I was lazy. I did not run or walk. I cheered. But I was really impressed with the number of our employees that were there, not just here at the district, but at the schools. The schools, a lot of the schools put together some great teams. Cindy Crosby was talking about the transportation presentation that we got. And one of the problems that I'm finding as I go to the different schools is complaints about parent pickup lines. And I think one of the ways we can decrease that is to increase student usage of transportation. So like Pine Woods Elementary School is right next to my neighborhood, and the line out on corkscrew is difficult. And the Village of Astero Council has actually talked to me about that. How can we improve that? Well, I think one of the greatest ways to improve that is to encourage the parents to put their kids on buses. But I don't know how to do that. Everywhere I go, I say, "I put my daughter on a bus every day, and a student is 13 times less likely to be in an accident if they're on a bus than if they're in your car." So I'm trying to find a way to more clearly communicate that with the public, so that parents will feel more confident putting their kids on buses. And finally, I wanted to mention publicly Mark Moore's presentation up in Tallahassee. That was really, really amazing. Mark, you did a great job. I'm very appreciative of your representation of the district. And I'm excited to have other people in the state come and see how well we do student assignment. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Mr. Toibert?
I have no comments.
Ms. LaRiviere?
Oh, let's see. I had the pleasure of, several of our, especially our middle schools and high schools, participated in the Florida State Celebrate Literacy Week. And I was invited to go to Eastly County and read, and had a delightful time reading. And I swear, picture books are the best thing. The vocabulary is rich. And some of these students, they don't stop to think. It's okay to read a picture book. And sometimes the teachers don't stop to think about the readability level. But we had a wonderful time sharing with that. And then I got to vote on, for Celebrate Literacy Week, they had door decorations. And so I gave my plug in, on which one I was ready for. And then the next day, I left for Washington. I had the pleasure and privilege to go to the National School Board Association Advocacy Training Week. And after that week, that, those days of training, I realized just how important it is for us to send one person every year for that, whether they are involved with federal or not. Because you are provided so much information to assist you on the state and local level, as well as federal, plus to also have that opportunity to have the engagement, because you never know who's going to have a connection with someone. While we were there on Sunday, was spent with advocacy training, as well as Monday, we had the pleasure of Senator John Tester from Montana came and shared. He serves on the Education Committee, as well as Senator Lamar Alexander. And it was very, it was nice to hear what they were saying is ringing too true with what we are thinking. And what we would like to see as far as more local control. We just need to make sure that our state knows that we want it to go to more local and less state, if possible. And had some very good trainings and webinars that took place prior to it by Brad Fitch. He is with a congressional management foundation. And the trainings that he provided are, through the webinars, were really great. And provided some skills that went above and beyond what we have. And so those are available, and I will email the rest of those to you. I encourage you to take advantage of it. And for us, we had, just want you to know that there were 700 pairs of feet making their footsteps all along Washington and the Capitol last Wednesday. Tuesday. The days run together. And we had a wonderful meeting with Representative Rooney's staff. Ironically, I know both of, knew both of the staff quite well. And so it turned into a very good, engaging time with what we do in Lee County, as well as what our needs are throughout the state of Florida. From there, we went to Senator Alexander's office, and we talked, discussed things we wanted to see happen, our recommendations for coming through on the Education Committee, as well as the Appropriations Committee. The key points that we targeted were school lunches. And the fact that we are supposed to be funded 40% through IDA, we are supposed to be funded 40% for that. We are currently funded at only 16%. Therefore, we are not able to meet the need, I mean, that's why we have to go into general revenue to assist us with our ESE students. And then from there, we went to Senator Nelson's office, and spoke with staff, and Senator Rubio's. For the first time in the years that the FSBA has been part of our group to go visit Senator Rubio's office, he called and apologized for not being able to come and say hello. And we felt good about that, because we were seeing a sign in Senator Rubio that he believes that he needs to listen to us. And he's open, more receptive for that communication. So I believe we should all take advantage of that and use it. A wonderful time. I am ready for more advocacy. We have a lot that we need to do. We have a lot that encouraged us to train the public in our community. And I apologize for taking time, but I believe staff who are here need to hear some of, be aware of this, as well as with you. And then this morning, I got, I had the pleasure of going, along with Ms. Morgan, to the surprise for our Support Person of the Year. And her biggest surprise was having her daughter there. That was a special treat. That was a wonderful way to start the week. And I too want to say, my husband went with me to the all-county bound band concert. And he said, "I cannot believe these are kids." What our teachers are doing, what our parents are doing to support our students, so they can excel and rise to be their highest potential in the arts, is just absolutely amazing.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Okay. I want to piggyback what Ms. Patrica said. I watched Mark Moore's presentation to the Florida House Pre-K Innovation Subcommittee, and was just blown away. And clearly, the people who were in attendance, part of the committee, learned a lot. And just kudos, because I think people really understand, I'm not sure people really understand choice. And I think Lee County provides an excellent example of what choice can and should be. So, thank you, Mark. I also just wanted, I noticed that Polk puts emphasis on hands-on maker education at the middle school level. I thought that was, that was my one little takeaway from Polk's presentation. I attended the Project Yes meeting last week. For those of you who aren't familiar with it, Project Yes was an effort, is an effort, by Dr. Atkins, formerly by Sheriff Mike Scott and Judge Seals, who represents the court system. Trying to pull together people in the community who are engaged in working with students, either in a not-for-profit or for-profit, providing social services, that kind of thing. Six schools were asked to present to this broader community group things that the community could bring to the schools, that the schools were unable to do for themselves. Things where the community could really make a difference. And what struck me, even though each school presented a different suggestion for a small amount of funding or a staff person, the thread was the same. The biggest problem we have in our schools, elementary, middle, and high, at least is represented by these schools, is student mental health. That a significant part of an administration's time and a classroom teacher's time is spent working with those students who really do not get the support they need, that we cannot provide. We simply don't have the resources to provide it. There are resources that need to be provided, in addition to school time, not during school time. I was a little disappointed by the attendance, because I think some of the people who needed to hear the message weren't there. But I think it's really striking, and there's got to be, well, I just hope there's some way that we can pursue initiatives along that line. I went to the FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America District Competition at Riverdale. First time attending, first time judging. I was very impressed by the rigor. I judged in two categories. What were my categories? Marketing and use of media. But the topics included, they ran the gamut from business ethics and business planning through accounting, strategic planning, product development, sales, use of media, the whole bit. Very rigorous assessment of their presentations. And I guess, in a way, I was just a little surprised that there are only two of our high schools represented. Riverdale always does very well, because Eileen Flores is a district representative. And I believe it was Cypress, maybe there were three high schools, Ida Baker and Cypress. Watching these kids, some had to present with their topic coming to them within an hour of their presentation. Some had, some had several months to work on their presentation. But their ability to use what they were getting in the classroom, and put it into a case study type, plug it into a case study, I thought was really impressive. And I think it behooves all of the schools to take a look at those programs for students who are interested in those topics. In addition to Mark Moore's presentation at the state, I think Amy Decimore deserves kudos for being quoted in the Palm Beach Press about capital funding, and the, well, funding in general, and the impact that it's having on school districts. I thought the write-up in the paper was terrific, and a great primer on, you know, how you talk to your legislature, your delegation, about the impact of the decisions that have been made over the past 10 years. I attended the Healthy Lee Town Hall meeting at Astero High. Dr. Atkins gave an overview of the Lee County School District Way of investing in wellness and the impact that it has had. Unfortunately, there were very few people in the audience in attendance, but I think the members of the public who attended were really stunned by what they saw from the investment that the school district is making in wellness and the impact it's had on the cost of insurance for the district, downward impact. Molly did a great job talking about our last meeting. But I will put out there that there is some concern that before, because these sites were purchased over 10 years ago, talking about high school MMM, because the sites were purchased over 10 years ago, it may behoove us, as a board, to meet with the county commission and DOT, to make absolutely certain that, before we make a decision to approve a piece of property, that we're going to be able to get the support that we need from DOT or the county to utilize those properties. And it may well be, Dr. Atkins, that staff is already doing that behind the scenes. And if they are, that's great. I don't, I'm not suggesting that we should back them up. Let's see. I went to visit the Spring Creek Elementary, Benita Middle, and Astero High School cafeterias. And this is because I'd been asked to go to Leesar and see how they do their food service. And I was kind of embarrassed that I hadn't been to any of our schools to see how we do our food service. And Sunny Stomacki arranged, well, we picked three schools in my, near where I live. I was really impressed by what we do. I was impressed by how much effort goes into getting kids input into food services. I was also surprised to learn that different schools interpret school regulations differently, with respect to what they can and should do in their cafeterias. I think the principals were kind of surprised by some of the questions I asked. But generally, I think that perception that came, oh, I'm going to say a couple of years ago, that kids were throwing stuff away because they had no choice, because the quality was poor, may have been overstated at the time, or there had simply been a big effort on the part of the Food and Nutrition Services to adjust menus, to make them more palatable for kids. And I think, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. And I just have a couple things. I also attended the 5K run, and I also was a cheerleader. And I don't know how much more time I can use my knee replacement as an excuse, but how long does it take, Mr. Toibert? Can I, a year or two? That's great. And Dr. Atkins was there, and Ms. Patrica, you were there. Anyway, there was a lot of excitement in the air. Marshall Bauer, of course, was making all the introductions, and they were, the front row was like this, ready to take off. So it was fun, and a nice fundraiser. I asked Mr. Marshall, Mr. Bauer, and he said they raised between $30,000 and $40,000, and then that's matched by the state. And so that's a big deal for all of us. I also attended the Insurance Task Force. They are financially solvent, and it looks like the wellness activities have had a very positive impact on the usage of our insurance plan. And I just wanted to follow up a little bit about the Science and Inventors Fair. I talked to Jim Helms this morning, so that you know that these kids really benefit from it. There are 13 categories. 26 of our kids will receive scholarships as a result of them being placed with blue ribbons for this. And those scholarships are, right now, $2,000 a year over four years to FGCU. So that's pretty significant, in terms of our schools encouraging our kids to participate and supporting them. And I believe that is it. So with that, if there aren't, if there's no good in the order, and I don't see any, this meeting, oh... So, with that, if there's no good of the order, and I don't see any, this meeting, oh.
Dr. Atkins?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. Board attorneys, superintendents coming, no. How could I forget the superintendent? Dr. Atkins, and then we'll go to Mr. Martin.
Okay, just a few items, and I had one item that I had sent you via a memo that I wanted to just briefly touch on before I get to that. Just a couple of comments. First of all, I will be, tomorrow I'll be visiting Coronado Charter School with Senator Saunders or Commissioner Saunders. I don't know which one he goes by now. I'll ask him. But anyway, Bert Saunders is going to take me on a tour as well. So, I'll be doing that, looking forward to that. One of the things that I have been looking into is the graduation rate of our charter schools and looking at potentially increasing our collaboration with our partners to help better support them and also improve communication. Right now, we have a very small staff. Dr. McCullers is, you know, working in that area. And really, beyond his small staff, we really don't have a lot of resources there. So, that's something that I'll be looking forward to. We had a number of schools, as was mentioned, participate in the Strides for Education. I was extremely happy about our level of participation. We had well over 1,000 runners and walkers participate in that event. Just a couple notables. Heights Elementary, I think, won the participation. They had somewhere between 80 and 100 participants at that school alone. Sunshine continued to be strong. I think they were the winners last year in that competition. So, I think it was game on. And Heights really rallied and brought out a few more, but Sunshine certainly deserves mention. Saw a lot of people from Lee High Acres Middle School. I know Lee High Senior was represented. I can't name all of the schools, but really good representation. And I hope I'm right with this, but I know that, I think Dr. Spiro was awarded something. He was an age group winner, or at least placed in his age group. Nikita Watson, I think I heard mentioned. And Leslie Gunderson also took the Masters, which is, that's a very competitive category. So, for her to take that is pretty remarkable. So, anyway, we were very happy with that level of participation in that event.
And Dr. Atkins is not telling you that he came in second in his division?
When you get to be my age, that comes a little bit easier. But anyway, the level of participation was really fantastic. Right after that, I did stop by the office here, get a change of clothes and cleaned up, and headed down to the Science Fair and the Inventors Fair. And I'm really happy to report, as I was walking around with Lee Hughes, that he said that our participation is actually up this year in both fairs. That made me feel really good. And I just have to mention that our school development folks, and I talked to Dr. Santini specifically about setting a goal there. I mean, he and I are both on the same page with level, you know, wanting students to participate. And I think you got, I think all the middle schools did participate this year, which was not the case last year. And so, we were happy. In fact, with the Inventors Fair, we may even have to look at exploring other options and venues. I know that Lee's talking with FSW about maybe expanding, because we are having a larger level or higher level of participation. So, felt good about that. Talked to several of the students, including my neighbor, who is doing a very interesting project. He lives a couple doors down. He's got all his cattle, and of course, that piqued my interest in what he's doing. But just amazing to see the level of thought and study and analysis that goes into those projects and the inventions. So, that was really neat to see. Next thing, I just wanted to mention a couple of comments about Pine Woods, and also wanted to bring up River Hall. Pine Woods, I do have an update there. I know that Mr. Dobson is working with, he'd gotten some quotes from the Sheriff's Department in terms of providing possibly some police or some Sheriff's Department control during that parent pickup time. But they're working with the county toward a long-term solution. So, there's like a short-term, a middle, and then a long-term solution that they're continuing to work on down there to try to alleviate that traffic concern. Mr. Law and Ms. Sanders, both text me in this meeting to make me, make sure I was aware that, I think I had mentioned to you that we were working on a solution for the River Hall situation. That's also where we have a traffic item. They are looking to start construction end of February this month on a temporary solution for River Hall, and then we'll work toward budgeting a longer-term solution so that we get the traffic off that road as well. And there are other ones, but these are the two that seem to be the most pressing at this time. They're looking at ahead at MMM. Just wanted to let you know that one of the things I had asked Mr. Moore to do, this goes way back to, back in the Dr. Browder days, some of you may recall the binders. He always had a binder on this, a binder on that. One of the things that we had was opening a new school. And so, I did have an old copy, and I passed that on to Mark a while ago. And what he's been tasked to do is to actually bring that into the, to, you know, the 21st century, and he's been working on that. In fact, every time we meet, he knows I've got it on my, I have a next action list that I give due dates, and he knows to expect that request, so he keeps me updated. But he's working on that. But a part of this, we learned so much from the Benita Springs High School, that he and I had that conversation, I think, months ago at this point, about that binder. So, I said, you know, we have to capture all the things that we're learning in terms of all the things that we have to do to touch base with municipalities, such as the county commissioners and the cities. And he is already working on doing that. Department of Transportation is a part of his analysis of school sites, so utilities as well. So, he's doing that, but he's also making it a part of our permanent process, so everybody can follow that same procedure with the school, not only MMM, but every school after that. Do want to just make folks aware that we have the Benita Springs High School information, Parent Information Night that's coming up at Benita Springs City Hall tomorrow night at 6:30. So, I will be there along with staff. And then, of course, we have the Educational Forum coming up the following day. That's at Cypress Lake High School, and that starts at 6 o'clock. So, those are a couple of things. And the last thing I have is I had provided a memo that had proposed workshop schedule attached to it. Just wanted a little bit of feedback. Jen Schaefer, I'll give her definitely credit for reviewing the last meeting and making sure that on our workshop, she took down all of the workshop topics. And so, I provided, you should have a copy of that. And then, Dr. Carlin has done, and our staff also in cabinet, looked at some of the upcoming workshop slash briefing items. And so, we tried to fit those into what might be a good working document, but wanted to bring it here today, just to get some feedback. Originally, we were going to talk about the protocols at this meeting, but we felt that in light of Ms. Fisher's family situation, that we wait until she could actively participate in that. So, we were thinking about bringing that forward on the 21st. The evaluation, my evaluation would also be a part of that particular conversation, because I think Ms. LaRiviere wanted to make sure that conversation occurred before March. And then, that pushed March, the budget meeting until March 7th, although I'm aware of at least one potential conflict there. And then Legislative Advocacy. And then, March 21st, ESC/ESOL update. And then, Growth. And one of the comments I wanted to make is that, before I go too much further, is that some of these, such as the ESC/ESOL update and the Growth, would probably be better to start with a briefing and let us provide you with information. And then, if that was something that you wanted to come back and do a workshop on, we could take direction at that time. But I think that those two items, the budget and the legislative, would be workshops. Protocols and evaluation would be workshops, but ESC and ESOL would be a briefing and a comeback later if you wanted to workshop. The same with preschool preparedness and restorative justice. You'd probably want a briefing first, and then if you wanted to do a workshop, you would follow up with a workshop on that. And then, the quality and continuous improvement, continuation of NEA Foundation work, I believe would be, I need to get your feedback on that one. Initially, I want to say a briefing, but if you feel differently, let me know. And then, Vision 2020 is, again, at your pleasure. I mean, that would, we certainly, part of what I should be doing as a superintendent is making sure that you are updated with the progress of our strategic plans. So, that's what I'm trying to do here, so that's the point where I am going to be briefing you. But if you want to talk about it in a workshop forum, we could do that also at that time or put that to a different meeting. So, this is just our initial stab at it, but wanted to bring that to you here today to get a little bit of feedback, to see if that's okay with the direction or if you have any suggestions moving forward. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I agree. I was looking at, and some looked like staff workshops, staff-led and board workshops. So, I'm glad that you see that, they do fit into different categories. I do have a question with, Dr. McCullers and I are meeting tomorrow to make sure everything, all the dates and everything are aligned for this year for the superintendent's evaluation for the guidelines that we will be getting out to everyone. The main reason we're thinking of a longer time is because for Dr. Cuckel, it's different than it was before. There's been a change to that. And then, we've also, the first evaluation is anecdotal, where you write down the strengths and areas of improvement, and you provide documentation. So, if there are areas that we see needing improvement, be sure that you're able to provide Dr. Atkins information about, so he can work on those areas. The one thing that I need to ask is, with the evaluation in the past, it was correlated with a strategic plan. I'm guessing you want us, do you want us to remove the strategic plan aspect and then incorporate the Vision 2020?
Well, I look at Vision 2020 really is our strategic plan.
Right. So, I will, what we will do, besides Dr. McCullers and myself, making sure we have that coordinated, is that I, if you could, maybe there's another staff member that I could, that we could touch base with to make sure we have that perfectly in mind.
Okay. I would say Dr. Carlin could assist with that.
So, we can do that.
Anything else, Ms. Patrica?
I was wondering if we could include a discussion about an operational audit in our budget workshop? And I am the one with whom there is a conflict for March 7th. I have a vacation planned that week. I'll be missing the board meeting.
That's right.
It was scheduled before I won my seat, and I can't cancel it, because my husband will not like that. And I feel like budget is a huge issue facing us, and I would really want to be present for that. So, if there's any flexibility with my fellow board members and staff, I'd appreciate that.
And we could certainly, the items, March 21st can certainly be flipped with, you know, the ones on March 7th, or I don't know how timely the Legislative Advocacy is. You know, we could split the difference or just flip them, whatever the board's pleasure. But we certainly could do ESC/ESOL updates and/or Growth on March 7th.
Flip them.
Okay.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
With regard to the operational audit, and maybe I should have asked this of the committees earlier, is it appropriate for us to ask the committee to give us a recommendation on something like that? Does the Finance Committee think it's appropriate, that kind of thing?
They've done it.
Oh, they have?
Yeah. And in fact, one of the things that Dr. Atkins will be presenting, I assume, will be the fact that they're now doing KPIs, initial step in operational audits.
Okay.
I would just make a suggestion that March 21st is the week before, the FSBA week in Tallahassee for Legislative Advocacy. Maybe, would you mind if we began the aspect with Legislative Advocacy while you were gone on March 27th?
No, that's fine. There really wasn't another subject on here that I felt like I needed to be physically present for, other than budget.
And that really, and that one's different, though, too, because that one's where we are all working together. We will just wait until the 21st, so we can be actively engaged in it, that we're working together on that. It's not staff-led, it would be.
Anything else, board members?
Let me make sure I have that clear. So, we'll do budget on the 21st.
And Legislative.
Legislative on the, okay, so we're just totally flipping the two of them. Okay. All right, I've got it.
Anything else? Mr. Martin?
Yes, Dr. Cuckel, school board members, I do have a school law minute. You'll recall, last time we spoke, we were addressing the process for making and addressing a main motion resulting from a superintendent's recommendation. So, the next question to address is, what if the superintendent wishes to withdraw his recommendation, that it's part of an agenda? Until a motion is made, the superintendent may withdraw any recommendation that's on the agenda. But after a motion is made, the motion must be withdrawn before a recommendation can be withdrawn. At the point that the motion is made, at that point, now the action belongs to the Assembly. So, until the motion is withdrawn, the recommendation cannot be withdrawn by the superintendent. So, what if there's an item on the consent agenda that you would like to address, make comment on individually, or possibly ask questions about with the possibility of voting against? If you wish to pull an item from the agenda, the consent agenda portion of the meeting, you should listen during, when the school board chair presents that portion. When introducing the consent portion of the agenda, the chair asks if any member wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda. If pulled, the item is then dealt with individually under the unfinished business pulled items. So, if you wish to pull an item, you should state, "I wish to pull item 4B2 on page 62," or whatever the nomenclature and page number may be for the item you wish to discuss. When called up under unfinished business, the member pulling the item usually makes the recommendation, so that he or she can then speak first in that discussion. So, what if the superintendent is not making a recommendation on an action on which you want the board to take a vote on? If you wish to make a motion without a superintendent's recommendation, you have the ability to do so, and the appropriate time to do so would be during board member comment portion of the agenda. School board attorney is always available to help you, to assist you in crafting any such motion. Please keep in mind that Ward has made a commitment in its protocols to strive to make no new proposals the night of the regular meeting. That's for the purpose of ensuring that the board members have sufficient time to research and consider any item that's brought to them for a vote. Though it's not required by law, it's also best practice to provide the public a full notice opportunity to see what items are on the agenda upon which the board may take action. If there is a motion made that's not a part of the agenda during a regular meeting, law does require an additional opportunity for public comment with respect to that motion that was not part of the agenda. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Martin. Now, we shall move to go to the order. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I sent to Ms. LaRiviere something that I would like us to talk about.
And I just want to clarify, I am not the state liaison. I am the alternate. Ms. Fisher is the liaison, but she and I are collaborating together in that role.
She's not here today.
And she is not here today. So, she and I actually talked on the phone, and we are going, planning to get together this week to discuss some legislative pieces. So, I was going to suggest that she and I go ahead, and we will take your draft, and we will work together to submit it. I believe it's very important to get something out to Governor Scott quickly and let him know, share with him what we are doing well. And.
Okay. Anything else?
And I just want to ask, again, is it necessary to do team-building training? Yeah, and I just want to ask, again, is it necessary to do team-building training? I feel like as a board, we've been working together since November. We're putting a lot of stuff on our plate, and I just wonder whether we need to set aside yet another three hours for team-building training. Just throwing it out.
Board members?
Well, as a new member, I would say yes, only because I'm still learning, and I think that I have a lot to learn from you. And so I'm, I want to continue that, and I think our relationship, I think we can build, and of course, we don't have to, you know, be together all the time, but I think we need something since the first one we had.
I am completely ambivalent.
Mr. Tiber?
I'm saying, I'm just like Chris, I'm eat away.
I think there will be some natural team building that will occur in our board workshops that we are doing together. There will be some aspects of it, but nothing that's actually titled, would fall under our category of saying team-building. Along with that, we go to my question, have we gotten a date yet for Master Board where we collaborate with Charlotte County and Sarasota?
I think Susan is working on the 5th and 6th of May.
Okay. So I know a lot, a lot will be done during those two days, but also the other aspects of Master Board that will include team-building. So I am open to doing, I believe that, I guess it's hard because we've got so much work to do. It's a combination, if we have so much work, I think one of the best things that we could do probably is go out a couple of nights after the action meeting to KJ's grill over here and just have some dinner and talk and engage with each other. Some things like that. But to take two to four hours, it's going to be, usually they're about four hours to do a true team-building, that's a long, that's a long time out of a day. And I personally, right now, would rather us use that four hours to get some of our work done, knowing that Master Board is coming as well, that will take care of some of that. So, but I will go with general consensus.
And I do have one question, and that is, will staff be involved apart from Dr. Atkins? Because that's where the value added would be.
Right. In the, in the, in the training, previously, it was Dr. Atkins, his cabinet, and the board.
Correct.
And still, would be the cabinet as well?
Correct.
In that case, I would find that very beneficial.
Yep.
The, if I could just weigh in, if we did something like that, the, my purpose is, I really want to foster a positive working relationship between the board and the cabinet. I think those opportunities give you a good feel for competency of different, different folks, so you can feel confident when work's done that they're going to be delivering for you, and then also that, you know, all in all, it's the executive and the governance team. And I think it's just important for, you know, for that collaborative relationship to be supported.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
That sounds good.
All right. We shall move forward. Anything else for the good of the order? And this meeting is adjourned. We have a performance, is that correct, at 5:45? And the performance is from Hancock Creek Elementary School. We'll see you back then.